Regular village board trustees meeting to order at six twenty-two. First order of business is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, from the United States of America. To the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with a day of justice.
Consideration of any changes, additions, or removal to the agenda.
Did you want to move the municipal manager update we can?
Is that okay with you, Chair? These folks are.
So we can move that to four A, which would be comments, under comments from citizens. At this point, I would ask that we table the ARPA funds allocation until July, just due to the fact that, as I mentioned in my email to you, that we're gonna have to allocate funds to the paving. We knew this for the paving of the lower half of the access road. You haven't get the grant on. I'm not sure what that number is yet. And before, you know, that will drastically affect some of the other things. So we talked about sidewalks. So once I have that number on by next week, we can go forward. I just don't want to have to undo something.
Now, those funds.
We had three thousand actually.
Those, the paving, it was not a budgeted item. We were gonna use the ARPA funds for it.
Well, we, we were hoping that, I think the consensus was is that we were on the top of the list to get a grant for the class two paving, which we did not get. And the consensus was, I mean, so we have a choice here. You can either use the ARPA funds to do that, or attempt to find someone else.
Have we met with Okemo to gauge their response to pitching in and helping that paving?
We haven't had that conversation. Go ahead.
Wouldn't hurt.
I can, I can do that as well, especially if we're gonna.
Hey, guys, our grant fell through. You want to pitch in?
I will, I'll have those conversations, but I think just tabling those discussions right now is pretty much just because it doesn't make. Because really, we need to do that. It has to be done, but it just.
Yeah, that wrote that. Just got a question.
Yes, Sam. Good afternoon, Alan, Judge, coming on the street. Was there an agreement with Okemo about maintaining that road in the extent to which they, you know, in the wintertime, they clear the snow and ice off it?
That's basically, there is an agreement that is met. It doesn't speak much to.
Repairs.
The repairs of it. There, there's language in the agreement or two about repairs to maintenance of West Hill with that. I think really that if we were to want to hold true to that agreement, should probably should be redesigned it because it's relatively old, which is something we can all get.
Thank you. So when do we, that still gives us plenty of time to have it allocated.
We have plenty of time if we, if we wait until July.
Okay.
Uh, December twenty twenty-four. For allocation jobs.
Yep.
Okay, approval minutes from previous meeting.
Oh, then I have one more. Sorry.
Go ahead, Ben.
Sorry. Possible executive session needs to be added. Get municipal manager as whatever that is, fourteen B.
I wasn't there.
I'll make a motion that we accept them. Trying not to do any of my typical corrections. Very difficult one.
It's okay.
I know, I'm coming down on that. But I'll make a motion that we accept them as written.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from citizens. See one. And then we'll do the municipal manager update.
So, uh, just a few things. Nothing major, major this month. Just kind of wanted to touch base on a few things. We have a upcoming joint meeting on June seventeenth with the select board at six P M., which will be for discussion regarding considering implementing an option tax, a local options tax here in town, as well as the process of merging the town and the village. That will be a public discussion and I won't call it a public hearing, but a public forum. That will be a joint meeting of the select board and the village to discuss those two. Two things will be the first of a few meetings as they're both, you know, kind of on the top of the proverbial hit list for the, for the town right now.
Is it okay if we invite Logan to that meeting? Cause he knows quite a bit about that more.
Yeah.
He had corrected a couple of things before.
He's the man for that.
He knows how to do it.
This mentor was gonna reach out to Logan, so let's invite him. Also Carol Lightholme from the chamber will be coming. So this is the first, to be honest with you, I think the options tax is a discussion that will kind of, in quote, we're trying to incorporate the, um, as much of insight and opinion as we can as to how, if we were to propose that, how we would draft it. So we want to get as much public input as we can. The village-town merger will be, you know, um, what I'm planning to bring is just why we need to do this, what the process is, and, um, what it's going to look like. I don't necessarily, we've talked, this has been talked about and it's something in my opinion, in the opinion of probably most people that, you know, work here as well, that it needs to be done. So, um, just the steps and there are going to be, it's will be a good time to have questions because there will be questions that I'm not thinking of, that people will bring up, that I'll have to go away, find an answer, and then I'll come back on the other one.
We're, we're doing both?
I think we'll be able to do them both at the same time. So we'll do them on the seventeen to six P M. Town will be having a retirement, there will be a retirement party for Chief Kalinda, who is retiring after twenty-five plus years as the fire chief here in town. That will be happening the twenty-seventh at four to seven at Post Thirty-Six at the Legion. So please stop by, say hello to Chief. We'll also be doing kind of what is referred to as the final ride home for Chief on the last day of June, which I believe is a Sunday. They'll probably be at noon, but we'll publicly advertise that and we'll do it from the fire station. Tradition is usually that the fire department drives their retiring chief home in the fire truck. So kind of a nice, nice send-off. On that note, Ben Whalen is our new incoming fire chief. He begins towards the end of next week. He will be here next month for the select board and the trustees meeting. So Ben's already starting to work with Chief Kalinda on transitioning a little bit and coming in. So that, that's good there. They've hit the ground running.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank Chief Kalinda. Twenty-five years. Tremendous amount of dedication to our community.
It really is. Lot of dedication to the town beyond words. So Memorial Day was last weekend, as usual, you know, a pretty poignant event here in town. Just thanks to the Legion, PD, fire services that participated, everybody in buildings and grounds, cemetery looks phenomenal. There was a nice gathering at Veterans Park. So that's always nice to be a part of that. Again, I look forward to that day in Mudlow. I've been coming since I was, my mom was making me go when I was three years old. So it's kind of a nice thing to still come to. So a thank you to everybody that was in, involved with that. No, we're still in, in the village now. We're kind of in the process, you know, I'll tie some of the FEMA buy-in with this timber inn. There was asbestos found in the timber inn, so in two of the rooms. Unfortunately, it was only probably smaller than the size of this table. It was linoleum tiles. So if it was your house, you're probably not having this conversation, but seeing how it's a almost two million dollar federal project, we have to have it properly disposed of. So that is being taken care of and the Catamount Abatement Company is taking care of that. Once that is done, Crown Point will demo the building. That is, we had a deadline of June tenth for that to be done. We were given a thirty-day extension, so we were extended to the end of July to have that done. In the village, you'll still see, we're kind of, I used the phrase that last fall, we stepped over a lot of things in terms of, you know, some of the smaller beautification things, that's because we were afraid it was gonna snow and trying to put things back together. So crews, everyone is town employees, staff are trying to kind of refocus, I guess, and look at, you know, kind of stepping on some of the smaller things and taking care of those. You know, some of the more, you know, picking, issues like I see things like picking up under the guardrails. You know, we got the fence out of the old dog park and stuff like that, which necessarily wasn't a priority in September or October last year. With that, you know, as we touch on some of the flood stuff, we are, our emergency management team has already scheduled a, you know, a briefing that we're gonna have in the next week or so, just to preempt, you know, summer weather. I hate to say it, but I've got to, I guess that's my job. So, you know, we have bids out too for the dams to have the spillways on the dams replaced that were damaged last year. In terms of the overview for the, you know, I've said before, we have two different, there's two different dam projects going on. There's one that is the spillways, the auxiliary spillways that were eroded during the flood. Those are going out to bid. They're out to bid, engineering's done, they're on target to be fixed and completed probably by the end of July, early August. Which is great, but those spillways necessarily don't have much to do with the integrity of the dam. The dams, the major project, which we talked about, the forty, fifty million dollar project is, we finally signed off and have secured the funding for complete one hundred percent funding of the engineering for rehabbing all of those dams, dredging them. That's great. Still, the engineering takes two years.
And how much is the engineering? Gotta be a pretty penny.
That's ten million of it. So I start seeing zeros on these things. But it's good because we are, and you know, I can try to reassure everyone because I know they're not, it's all, it's a scary thing to think about, but we are making giant progress, whether it feels like it or not. You know, where we are now, where we were even before the flood is tremendous. You know, we moved a lot to get the federal government to move that fast is a feat in and outside.
Take Timber Inn.
Take the Timber Inn, five years. So that's really, that's really the long and short of it right now, so.
Good update. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Who is ultimately responsible for cleaning up along the Black River in the village?
So when you say cleaning up, do you mean the debris? So this is a, this is a funny conversation because it is the, realistically, it's the state of Vermont because they're responsible for the rivers and/or the property owners that, above that. With that being said, I've had, two weeks ago, I have a, I have a close personal friend who, you know, works at a fairly high capacity for the state. So we talk a lot about the floods and what's working and what's not. And, you know, he's one of my dear friends, so we're pretty candid with each other on this. And they're talking about the, you know, the governor wants to do a, you know, another green-up day, et cetera. Another green-up day to help green up. And I said, you know, I'm gonna be honest with you, that's great, but, sorry, just don't want this to go off again. But the reality is, is that it's having people come down and don't, green up that, that's not what we need. I drive it every day when I come into work. I drive by, make the turn onto one, one oh-three, and I go by the Paw Lodge, and I look at everything that's out there and I just see it and my head explodes. I'm sorry. And it's a difficult thing. So I said, you know, what, because she says, what, what does the town need? I said, we need something in terms of, you know, whether the state can allocate us money to hire contractors. We don't have the capability to do this, to go in and clean that up. One, we don't have the manpower. Two, as much as it is our problem, it isn't because now we're on other people, we're on private property, we're in the rivers, you know. So we need something, and I think this is something that the state, our reps, whoever needs to look at and say, yes, what, you want to talk about flood cleanup? From, from the Timber Inn to the Cavendish Point, it looks like hell. Let's be honest. You know, so we went in and we got, and we're gonna pull out the, for us, we're gonna go down where the Little League field fence is now that it's dry, we're gonna rip that up. But still, that whole river line, you know, we had to pull the ghoul out of there. We don't have, you know, because unfortunately, we are trying to do the flood recovery still, while trying to be business as usual. We still have a town, and we still get a great roads, we still have water mains and sewer lines that break every day. So the help we need is something like that where they say, here's the funding. It's a grant, you know, whether there's a match, whatever, we can supply a dump truck. We can supply an operator. We don't have the manpower to go and clean up a mile and a half. And, and it's honestly, the liability is there as well because we, it, it takes an act of Congress to get in the river. You know?
That's sort of flooded.
Absolutely.
The number one thing I said was, let's dredge the river.
Yeah.
They can't do it. Say it's not gonna let you in.
But it's.
On stable, not let us.
And, you know, part of, you know, we have issues where if you go up, you know, Ron and I, our road from, went up, East Lake Road, and you go up to Coon's Family Inn up that way. And this isn't germane to that area, but there are concerns that we have where there are trees that are laying in. We cannot remove those because. Yeah, so that's the concern. So there's something, you know, as we're talking about flood recovery and mitigation, that's a piece of it. And there's, that's one that we don't have an answer for. Because again, I'm gonna drive it home in a little while and I, I come right by Fletcher Farms and it's usually just gorgeous. And you know, the bridge. So, and those are the things that we can, we're working on doing, but for us, it's baby steps because we start, like Ron and I say, even if the guys, we said, have them half an hour a day, an hour a day, to drive by, do something. But then all of a sudden, you know, call in the morning, like, the sewer's flowing out of the ground down here. This isn't supposed to be doing that. So it's, it's, it's a challenge, especially for, for us.
I don't disagree with you in any way.
I just wish I had a better answer other than it looks like crap.
Our, our house sits on the high side of Blood Street extension. And from our yard, we look at the dental center.
Yep.
And we look at Brook Haven.
Yeah.
Brook Haven's a mess.
And when they cleaned up the parking lot at the dental center, where the contractor was, he moved a bunch of debris from where it was, pushed it down toward the property line with Brook Haven. It's still sitting there today.
Yeah. It's like painting your wall around the couch. It was lazy.
And all the debris below that is still behind Brook Haven is all.
And I think that, you know, my hopes are that, you know, I try to check myself sometimes where I know, I was in a municipal government when Irene happened, but I know how long it took to get some things back. So I'm trying to stay positive where I'm like, okay, it's only, it's only a year. I haven't seen any money from FEMA, but it's only a year.
Yeah.
And maybe some of these ideas will, will come to fruition and there are things, but it, it's, it's difficult now, especially after, you know, we've had, you know, I, I said to the, you know, said one of our natural, Secretary of Natural Resources, you know, this is what we're dealing with. I said, and we're trying to focus on this and we're still trying to get a grocery store back. So it's, you know, it's kind of picking your battles as we can.
Yes.
But they're all important and it's just, sometimes I feel like we're spinning those plates and just.
Is there anything that you're looking at into the future? So, all right, we understand flash flooding can happen. We, I, I get it. I get that we can have an Irene come through again. Are we doing anything to help to stop some of this flooding?
You know, and.
Monitoring the dams, leasing them, keeping levels steady.
That's, we've done a lot too, as Justin said, you know, we do proactive things. We're very good with making sure our culverts and our ditches are clean. Our, you know, water and wastewater departments, highways have been very active since last year. When we look at the weather and somebody says, all right, let's go drop that dam. You know, we open the dam, we drop it. That is, that's part of it. But part of that answer is, I, water is gonna do what water wants to do. And there's really, you know, we live in a flood.
Mountains in a valley with a river.
So.
Four mountains like this.
Yeah.
It's tough, tough sometimes.
You can do certain things and there's sections of, you know, it's just, we, we did dredge part of this river over here, which is great. You know, Joel Brook, we got a lot of that debris out. But there's also a school of thought that if you, if you do that to cer- certain sections, it just makes it, it makes it, makes the water flow faster and deeper. And then eventually you do hit the spot where you stop dredging and the water just goes everywhere. So we're kind of in a way, unfortunately doubtful, we have to, you know, look at what we, things we can control, I guess. And that's what we're responsible for. And if it decides it's gonna rain for two days and, you know, we're gonna get ten inches of rain, if we've done what we were supposed to do, hopefully it won't be void. But we're getting there, I guess.
Like to circle back on your original point with the debris. There is, gotta be something done about getting debris cleaned up at these places. You know, the old subway is a prime example. Just didn't do a lick of work, just left it and it's sitting there. It's on us as a town to make sure that they don't do that very much longer. So there's definitely gonna be some action around that.
Just because you're driving into town, I mean, this town has, I mean, I know we only have two thousand five hundred people residents here, but this town has a lot of visitors in here and a lot of people here.
Coming from the south, it's not a great sight.
Not only is it, and it's not only problematic from an aesthetic side of point of view, but these also, if things aren't secured and it floods, that building's gonna end up somewhere else as a bigger problem. So and not just that building, any building at the same time.
And I just use them as an example. But there's plenty of debris around and it's flood-related material, probably hazardous, toxic, whatever. It needs to be cleaned up. And we should look at our bylaws, our ordinances and understand what our recourse is are, or maybe draft new ones. So that's on the docket.
We wanted to thank you for answering our question.
The other situation is, you know, the federal government has just allocated ninety million of the state of Vermont. I hope, I hope our local legislators.
Get us all the.
Legislators are gonna fight like cats for some of that ninety million.
I would agree.
Burlington doesn't need another new school. Burlington doesn't need another new school.
Yeah, I know.
And well, we're just gonna grab eighty million of it. And what's gonna get left for the little guy?
Yeah.
And I do hope eventually we get a Little League park back with kids.
So we're. You know, that's, I think what our goal is in working with, talking with Nick and some of the rec committee as well, is that Little League, we'll have a field that will probably be encompassed up at the high school. And the lower, it's down by the, well, fire departments are busy today. And the lower, there will be some sort of a global impact right here.
That's crazy because I had those in mind and knowing my bad luck back.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah.
All right, thank you very much for your.
Thank you very much.
Good night, folks.
Take care.
Good night. It's like you're excited at once, right?
What about that merger?
Consider changes to village zoning regulations as proposed by the planning commission.
We kind of went through that at the hearing.
But they're gonna come back, I guess, they're gonna come back.
So we had, we had a couple we were holding anyway.
Yeah, two twenty was the main one that needed the change. We're gonna come back.
The changes that we made, we need to make sure that.
Yep, it's gonna be.
And they gotta turn to Jeff.
The decimal reader, that's important.
Well, he, he talked to me about it. So they need to ask him what.
Yeah.
What he.
They should have, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, allocation and review and possibly approve. Thirteen South Hill Street.
Yeah.
Where's that?
Doesn't exist.
So South Hill Road thirteen, this is, they currently have four bedrooms, looking to add a additional unit with one bedroom.
They, they subdivided their land. Cool. I make a motion to accept the additional one-bedroom unit as presented for thirteen South Hill Road.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen Commonwealth Avenue.
We, we spoke on this one before, this is a vacant lot that we said we would have, we would, we were gonna send it as a three to, one to three bedroom allocation. We're actually looking to make it a four-bedroom allocation, so they're hoping for one additional bedroom. Buildings. In the process.
Now, did they pay the hook on the connection to the earlier, is that how that works?
Yeah, they've already paid it. They had an allocation, you know, hook on for three, one to three bedrooms. So then they increased to four, so it's one more allocation.
Make a motion to approve thirteen Commonwealth Avenue, one additional bedroom allocation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Landlot Spalding Farm Road, new construction, seeking six-bedroom allocation.
Just the stated, six-bedroom new construction.
A big one.
Big one.
Make a motion to approve a new hook-on for a six-bedroom allocation on a landlot on Spalding Farm Road.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Department head reports.
Flood debris is highlighted on this municipal report, that's great. How is the?
Lot less, lot less sewer than last one.
Yeah, six point three million gallons less.
Is that right?
That's okay.
Is that a play called?
Do you remember, are, were they, they were processing twelve to fourteen million gallons of wastewater?
So we've been having some, I don't know if you, yeah, so the sternback is basically, you know, because the bugs were dying from the plant, because the flow was down so much. There wasn't any food for the bugs to digest, so we had to add this to help keep the digestion process. We were, we've always met our permit, but our F one was not, although it was meeting permit, our F one was not looking great. It was very dark, so.
No.
For a long, long, you gotta help this. Vermont real long, you gotta have this or I'm gonna, I think this 155 down drum.
Science. It's wild. Um, I know that we have uh, our own uh, water commissioners. I'm just curious. We've had a lot of water main breaks. Both of my businesses broke in the past 10 years. I mean, there's been a handful of them. We've gone. Is there any movement to replacing our sewer line system, which is gonna be just another astronomical challenge?
Yeah, so we, um, the water department, we just had a asset management study done. Um, I think it would be wise if we begin to look at one for the wastewater department. The water department, we just had a meeting last week with our engineers at the and if anything for me, it gave me a great overview of exactly what we have, what the age is, what the condition is. You know, rather than just knowing, hearing it and I as I should, Joe and Ron are great. I can ask them and they know like this. Um, so they just tell me, but for me, they'd be able to sit down and look at this in a spreadsheet and on a map that says, oh yeah, well, this water main was replaced in 1985, but this one wasn't, hasn't been replaced. It begins to make, allow me to be able to do my job better. I can look and say, all right, this should be on the top of the list. Um, I think looking at doing something for that from the wastewater department. The water, water department, it was completely funded by the state. So
Great.
Uh, it's something we can look at for the wastewater.
And we monitor our water and I, I drink out of town and we've always had great water, but I'm curious with the PFAS coming in and the uptick on whatever chemicals are in our, are in our, are in our water table now. Um, do we, are we testing for that currently?
We currently, we have our monthly tests that we are weekly that they do for examples. I'm not sure if we're tested, if they changed the model for what we have to test for.
Cause this is Vermont at a state level mandating a bunch of other
There are some of these things, um, which is covered by TAN, which is an acronym, but uh, I know that our water supply is about as perfect as you can. I would say that could change, but we have to barely touch our water.
Yeah, we get unlimited supply up there on western mountain. No, I, I've, I've been threatening to go and take
You asked him threatening to go.
All right, we're skipping eight.
I don't have any receivables.
Age receivables.
So I'll be, and I'm kinda, our, ours, currently our age receivables and collections are astoundingly good.
That's great news. It is a lot.
Yeah, so to give you an idea, um, currently we have out of an outstanding, you know, I guess what we call outstanding with collections is 18,357, 11,000 of that is sewer only. Which then if you broke down, we have a number of that, that are on, you know, plans now. Obviously with the wastewater gets a little more complicated. We can't just shut off the wastewater.
Well, good.
Um, have to put a lien on the property. Um, so to give you an idea, after our last billing period, we billed out $675,000 in receivables. We've collected everything except for $11,395, which is pretty good.
That is good.
There is one, uh, over 120 that's at $4,374.15. Have you reached out to that homeowner? I don't wanna give you his address, but
On each of your arms.
Okay, right here.
Yes.
Yes.
Julie asked which page?
Oh God, page three, page three, probably halfway down, a little over halfway down. Seeds over 120 days. That's great. Good, good job cleaning that up. That was a mess.
Other business?
I have a couple of things. Um, crosswalk signs. I noticed that a couple of them are in the middle lane. Couple of them are off to the side and then a couple of them just aren't there. Um, I, speaking on behalf of myself on this board, would love to see them in the center. The W L line parked right there. So people are hyper aware.
I think it slows traffic down too.
Yeah.
I definitely, I walk every day with the kids and it is
Brutal. It's brutal.
I literally stopped tractor trailers and go, why are kids, kids in the road? Then you don't notice any of it.
Did we lose any of those signs in the flood?
We used to have like
There's one we picked up.
Those might be down, you know, where we went.
Climb down, I climbed down behind the mill and picked one up.
You did that?
Yeah.
I was, I was going there.
There was one down there.
Someone got there.
So we have, we have a number of them. And we've ordered some more.
They're so expensive. I looked at some, um, to put it just near my house, not that exact same kind, but they're expensive.
Grossly expensive. One more than I did see one on High Street.
I did too.
It's fine.
Yeah, kids grabbed it.
Some of the kids grabbed it and it's right out there. So I went, hey, they were
God bless them. People go 6,000 miles an hour through that stop sign.
They were stopping there for them too. I thought that was great.
One of my main agenda items, uh, for the village is to make it much more pedestrian and alternative transportation friendly.
We talked about that at the last meeting, um, you know, pedestrian friendly initiative. Which I think, you know, Julie said she was on board.
I would definitely go.
So I think that's something to look at.
Yeah. Um, I know it's a main state highway and we have, I, the traffic study is what? 60,000 vehicles or something a day. It's an outrageous amount. Um, but this is our town, this is our community and you need to abide by the state pedestrian signs. Um, okay, Ludlow Electric, um, do we have an update on what's going on there?
Where Ludlow Electric stands right now in terms of their board is that they have one commissioner on the board at this point. One resigned last week. So that leaves them with one person, which is Shannon Barton. Why that is germane to the town, aside from the weather electric being an entity of the municipality to an extent, is that now the appointment of the new of any board members falls to this board. So, uh, the trustees will need to appoint anyone to that, uh, board of electric department commissioners. I believe there's a one year term and a two year term that are up. Both the appointments would be for just this election cycle. So you just, it's basically considered, considered interim. So they're appointed until March, at which point they will we have advertised, put it out, the electric department has put it on the website. I asked Diane who did then posted the details on the municipal website, on our website, because I think it, you know, I don't think it's any secret right now that there is some turmoil at the electric department. It's been public meetings, et cetera. So that entity is crucial to the town of Ludlow. I think that's, that's not to debate.
We definitely don't wanna lose Ludlow Electric.
We don't wanna lose that to
No, we sure don't.
We need to do, you know, I've been attending meetings, been talking to, you know, doing my part, even though, you know, it's, I wanna be very clear, it's not necessarily in my purview, but in, in, I have no agenda with it. I just want what is best for the town of Ludlow. So I do, will do anything I can to help that process. Part of that is putting it on the town website and facilitating getting, you know, commissioners in there to move this process along. So, um, at this point, speaking with, you know, the, the electric department, their council, we will, we will gather any acceptable applications, letters, letters of interest that we have. Our meeting on the second, which I believe is the second of July, we'll appoint those. At this point, it does not seem like there's anything that is going to be immediate where they would need to make a decision. I believe that if there was any management decisions, any major things, like if that were to come up, it would either default to their manager or foreman, or possibly the board to make that decision. I don't foresee that happening because everybody right now is kind of status quo. Like they understand that you can't do anything, but you have to do something. And the likelihood that it happens, we'll just call a meeting and appoint somebody so they have, so they have a quorum. But I don't feel that we have to appoint somebody for, uh, until July.
I do want, um, to let the Ludlow Electric Department know that this board, or at least myself is, I'm, I'm happy to assist in any way I can.
I think it would be, and if you don't mind, I think it'd be, you know, possibly prudent in my eyes to, to invite a board member, or maybe if we're going to be appointing people in
July.
July. Let's invite, let's have an agenda item and say, can you provide us an update of actually what is going on here? Because it is, again, although we don't have the oversight, but we do, you do, because you're appointing people. You don't make day to day operational decisions. But it is essentially an entity of the town in one way or the other. So I think it's, it would be beneficial that for someone to come and provide this board an update of exactly what's going on, what the future looks like. And as I just said, and you said, if you need help, just ask, like, I'm, we're more than like, we, we're in this together. So let's, let's figure it out. Um, if, you know, sometimes municipal government and boards can be tricky waters to navigate sometimes because it's, if you're not used to doing it every day, it's, it's hard to understand exactly what is, you know, what is the correct way and procedural way to do it. So that can be, that's a learning curve in all of itself.
How about the olive branches there?
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll look forward to appointing people in July. Um, and definitely having somebody here to speak on behalf of Ludlow Electric would be great. Um, green space at Main Street and Commonwealth Ave. What's going on with that?
That's a great question.
Yeah, I'm wondering.
So that will be something I'm gonna have to look into. I know, I mean, I know limited amounts, amount about that. I remember the building that was, was damaged. Then I remember it being demolished and the pile being there and then eventually being removed. That's about my extent of damage for that property. Um, it would be, I'll, I'll, I'll research it, find out where, what, what, what can be done with it, what was supposed to be done with it. Um, one thing we will have to probably, again, if we're gonna do something with that space, we have to do it anyways. It's take a long, hard look at that culvert.
I don't know if we own that property.
I looked at the parcel viewer and according to the parcel, we do.
I heard you had a lien on it.
So my understanding was we paid when that property was being sold. Town of Ludlow ponied up, or Village of Ludlow, I suppose, ponied up money to remove all that debris. It costed $50,000.
That sounds, that sounds good.
It was a ton of money. And there should, I hope and pray to God, be a written agreement between the landowner and the town of Ludlow for that.
I'll, I'll, I'll have to research that. I'm sure there is.
Yeah, thank you. Um, but you know, I don't, I don't know of any other time where the town has gone onto private property and spent money to remove something. So that's odd to me, the whole thing is odd.
If I recall from being at all the meetings, there was a lot of concern and talk about it being unsafe.
Yeah, there was materials in there that was
And kids playing and so that
I remember it was removed because it was a safety.
Right, safety. That's what I, and cause I'm, whatever.
We approved it. I remember.
We have taken other buildings down. Yeah. I think that was probably borderline under dangerous, dangerous, dangerous buildings. Yeah.
We have taken buildings down, but on private property like that? We have.
You can order them to be taken down.
But then we pay for it.
Eventually.
Yeah, okay. It's a nice little green space.
It is.
Set date for the next meeting, July 2nd, 2024. And we'll add it, we'll make sure we have that electric.
Yeah.
On the agenda. I think we've all signed warrant orders.
Correct.
And I guess we need to go.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.